Welcome to the City Council Work Session for June 17, 2019. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a joint meeting with Johnson City Village Trustees, so they're able to speak in this meeting also. The public is not allowed to speak in this meeting. It's open to the public, you're welcome to stay, but you're not allowed to address anybody here at the meeting. And with that, we'll welcome, uh, roll call please, I'm sorry.
So I'll start with City of Arlington. Councilman Serengi?
Present.
Councilman Livingston?
Present.
Councilwoman Kance?
Present.
Councilman Taylor?
Present.
Councilman Papistrat?
Present.
Councilman Mazza?
Present.
President Scanlon?
Present.
City of Arlington, all here. Village of Johnson City, trustee Giblin?
Present.
Trustee Maney?
Present.
Trustee Reynolds?
Present.
Trustee Walker?
Present.
Mayor Demi?
Present.
All here for Village of Johnson City.
Okay. Well, welcome Mr. Bruce Toby to discuss the Arlington Joint Sewer Treatment Plant. Welcome, Mr. Toby.
Thank you, sir. Mr. President, Mayor, trustees, councilors, good to be here tonight. I'd like to lay out a lot of facts for you all in a sequential way, and by dedupwing that, explain to you the process that's been undertaken so far, where we are at this point in time in that process, and what's going to be happening next. Hardly says I should introduce myself. We have met before, we're not strangers, many of us, but I would just give you a broad overview. Together with our subcontractor, Bevan Bode, who's PE, and me in the caper in seat on this project as a lawyer, we have almost ninety years between us in the water, wastewater sector, dealing with all elements. And curiously, we've both done it the same way. We've spent a lot of time in the private sector on these matters, and we've spent a lot of time in the public sector on these matters. We've worked in settings where contract operations is an option that's chosen and executed, and we've worked in settings where public operation is the norm and it continues to be. There's one area where we don't overlap, that would be I do the legal and he does the PE side of it, but there's a lot of overlap. Operations, management background perspectives, our admin perspectives, as procurement, such as labor, and then the policy considerations that flow around, and the legal policy considerations, compliance with increasingly more stringent federal and state standards that often all been handcuffed operators of water and wastewater facilities. So, if I may say so myself, I think we're a team, a strong team. When we came on board back in October, after council voted funding for us to proceed with Task One, which was the matter during the study, we got to work doing just that, doing a study. And that came to closure more or less the end of January. So let it begin by running through the study, the phases of it, the funding we made, as proposed, basis to go on forward. What we did was very open, by the way. We were frequent flyers at that plant in City Hall with staff, with management, some folk in the workforce, by touring the facility, and then I gained to know some good people. We met with the construction management and the facilities management teams, that is to say. We compiled one mountain of data, the data that touched just about every element of the operation of that facility, financing of that facility, the goals and objectives. I had an advantage too, which is to say, back in 2011, I was part of the team that was retained by the Joint Sewer Room, with my piece of the responsibility being to review the governance structure. So the whole notion of the owners and the outside agreements, and the board, and the IMA, and all of them, which was invaluable in many different ways frankly, to going forward. That was a very useful prism to be shooting in the light of all the data that we collected. And frankly, I put my lawyer hat on, I've got three hats, I mean, I've been a public official, I was a mayor running my own sewer treatment plant, can't believe that, right? The lawyer one, and the MBA one, there are three hats on my head. I treated a lot of this in a very lawyerly way, which is to say, we did intense discovery. I see Ed here, Ed was a soldier, generating information for us, and it related to governance management, project design, engineering, construction, programmatic, consideration documents relevant to the dynamics of running the current plant, the coming plant, labor contracts, there were lots and lots of financial records. It was a very, very in-depth exercise, and one that was very valuable to our deliberations. We interviewed a lot of folk, it was not exhaustive, seventy people, seventy people to you, hundreds of people, but we interviewed dozens of people. And got some very good insights on past issues, current situations, future outlooks. We even participated in a consent update conference, where the owners were represented, the board was represented, with New York State Department of Conservationation, the construction management team, so we could really see the dynamics of who was on first on which issues. It was a very interesting exercise to be at that meeting, and to consider it all. We then ran it through a second prism, all this data, pillar and finance, and that was just our own experiments. I mean, I've been up on the grounds, the campuses of sewer plants around this country, and into the bowels of those plants, and Bevan even also. Doing that, talking this through, we reached some tentative, what I would call foundational findings. I would say there were four. First is, your communities are facing an enormous positive opportunity with the opening of this new plant. Two-hundred-and-seventy million dollars has been invested. By the way, the paramount concern, and this has been drilled into my head, and I've drilled into lots of other heads over the course of my decades doing this, was the ratepayers, protecting the ratepayer investment, investment, and getting frankly for them a return on that investment, a payback. Now, what did, so what did that mean? It meant, we wanted almost rebranding to occur. It's not just about taking sewage and getting rid of it. It's going to be about reclaiming water. It's going to be about enhancing the quality of the Susquehanna River, and at the far end, the Chesapeake Bay, which of course is part of the regulatory drive that's going on here. It improves community values, it improves the prospects for new growth and development. So this is a tremendous opportunity, and not one to be squandered. It's one to be captured maximally. That was one of our foundational findings. Second one was, this facility's going to have the capacity to handle sixty million gallons a day of flow. It's not going to be the silver bullet that will solve all your combined sewer overflow problems going forward, but it sure is part of the solution, because there is room in your plan deliberately designed to handle those flows. If it was a small plant, and there's a rain event, there's a snowmelt going down, you're going to have your CSOs dischancing into the room, and those are going to get counted against you, and it's going to lead to very rigorous requirements to rebuild your sewer system, your collection system. And take it from me, because I've been through it in multiple settings, you don't have to do that. With this plant properly run, you can at least mitigate substantially that burden. That's an important, second foundational finding. Third one is just a simple fact of life, and I've seen it too many times, because I've been a regulator. When I was with the Boston Harbor Cleanup, I was regulating the industrial community with other attorneys and technical folks. The regulatory forbearance that's been the norm since 2011 isn't going to continue when that plant goes online. Too much money has been spent, too much state energy has been invested, it's going to have to work, and the violations are going to have to stop. And if they do not, there will be consequences that will be unavoidable. And one of the ways you manage, besides maximizing management and the facility, one of the ways you manage the situation best is also to allocate the risk, so that there's accountability on others, so that they feel a responsibility and given obligation to run that plant the way it needs to be run. The fourth foundational finding that we made was this, the folks who work at that plant put their hearts and their souls into it. You've got soldiers there who are good, damned good. They're committed to the place, they're committed to the mission, they've seen it through a good time to be had. But the question that arises from that, and that pivots me to the next point, why did we recommend contract operations, a public-private partnership, bringing in a contractor to help with maintenance, operations, and management of some of your future capital of the day? The soldiers are rock solid. The problem's going to be with a new facility of this complexity, issues such as whole new arranges of issues to be managed, whole new scopes of operations to be controlled, and whole new sets of resources that are going to have to be available, that you don't want to be paying for on a full-time basis, to deal with the issues that are going to inevitably arise, as they do with any facility of this sort. I don't elaborate on that, Ed, man. It's about the general ship and the weapons of material. This plant is going to be one of the most high-tech and complex wastewater plants in the fifty states. Not in the southern tier, not in New York, not in the northeast, in the United States. And what is really remarkable, but worse, is the relative postage stamp size fossil of land it's built on, and the stacking that have occurred, and the interweaving of facilities and functions that have inevitably developed. This is going to have a whole order of magnitude increase in the sophistication of the mechanical, the electrical, the instrument components, instrumentation is going to be remarkably specialized, and the maintenance is going to be key, and again, more closely, specialized. So that the key is getting the specialized knowledge and experience, both at those highest levels every day, and on standby when you need them, so that you don't have to worry about violation, and the regulators having lost the forbearance of the last few years. A contract operator will be able to bring that to the table. That's what they do. Building on that, secondly, and this is not an exhaustive list, but I want to give you some of the high points, so that you see what points we've reached. There is a real need for a sophisticated approach to the maintenance function going forward when the plant goes online. A two-hundred-and-seventy million dollar investment cannot be frittered away, because core maintenance responsibilities are managed and executed. Now, the key to that is a sophisticated computerized maintenance management system, CMMS, and an operator with day-one full knowledge of that CMMS, what it can do, and making sure it's doing it. That way, you do your preventive maintenance on schedule, not because something's going wrong. You do your predictive, you do your preventive as well, ahead of the curve. And last, but perhaps most vitally important, so much of this new equipment is coming with All the maintenance work that's required to preserve those warranties has got to be on a short list of items called Job One. Got to be, got to be, because what you do not want to have happen, if something goes wrong, have a violation, you go to the supplier and say, "Your equipment didn't do what needed to do," and they say, "Well, that's because you didn't take care of it and maintain the warranty requirements." So this is a second absolutely critical obligation, dealing with an investment, and that's of this consequence. Then there is what I have come to refer to as the SWAT team concern, the highly specialized personnel and equipment that will inevitably be needed on occasions because something goes wrong. You cannot humanly expect to hire every person, have every piece of equipment on standby that you might need as owners, but you can hire someone who does, who has that bench, who can make that call, and get the SWAT team in to get the problem fixed. They'll come in, they will be covered employees, they'll be able to drop in on short notice, and then they're off to the next place where they need it. Third, very important reason to come down on the side of contract operations. By the way, words matter, words matter. I'm saying contract operations, I have not said privatization. There's a fundamental reason for that. This is not a privatization. This facility is going to remain in the complete ownership and control of the owners. And I'll speak again to that. This is a public-private partnership, and I know some of you have discussed this at other meetings, and there's a whole spectrum where you can do a very complex, single procurement, to design, to build, to operate, to finance even, a facility. Well, that wasn't done here. And then there are variations where you peel off a letter, you take it back to basically the most vanilla, which is contract operations, which is a contract, a contractor, folks who are monitoring it, and strict attendance being required to all the details, all the implications that is set out by contract. That is not privatization. Privatization is sale, sale of the asset. That's happened in other states. A lot of control gets lost, a lot of good things is lost. A key, specific concern arising from the nature of what this plant is and what it's required to do, not only is it complex, but this plant is very sensitive to large variations in fluent flow and quality. That's because of the combined sewer overflow considerations. You've got to be on top of that, or you're going to have upsets anywhere. And it needs to be the capacity of management to make the rapid adjustments, so that you ensure compliance and don't have those upsets. Again, it's about risk allocation, putting that obligation on the monkey's back of that third party. If they hit it wrong, they pay. I know you were provided with the draft contract, that's sort of the straw man for the exercise of the RFP, and you'll see there are liquidated damages to that. They don't want to pay for liquidated damages, and they don't want the black box out there, Vitally important, given the variations that are possible in this plant. Two more. Transitioning to the newly constructed facilities of an existing plant is going to be very testing and trying, because it's happening in a piecemeal way, right? It's not going to be a turn the switch one day, the old one's down, the old one's on. This is going to be happening over time. It's one of those difficult challenges that operating faces, particularly when the plant's in operation while it's happening. So again, the need for skilled, experienced transitional oversight, as this goes down, it's going to be vitally important to success. And I know everybody's committed to success, there's too much riding on this. Lastly, a contract operator comes with the capacity to train its workforce, to train the soldiers, to expand their opportunities, to cross-train them to do different functions, and to create incentives that enhance the prospects that that's going to have. So, against the backdrop of those findings and many others, the mayor's made the determination and shared the information with these two parties, that we would proceed with an RFP. And at that point, what I call Task Two began. Now, the good news is, all that work that I described and all those considerations constituted a very solid foundation upon which to build, to build the RFP. The RFP envisions two possible scenarios, a five-year contract with a five-year second term, or a ten-year contract with a ten-year second term. By the way, obviously, a key concern is what would the implications on rates be with a contract operations model being put to that plant? This will not cause rate shock, because the RFP requires a base annual fee to cover all the obligations of operating that facility, maintaining that facility, and doing additional tasks, with an annual adjustment based on a specified CPI sewer price index record. That's predictable, that's a solid, steady number with a predictable increase over time. Within the context of that consideration and all the other things I've talked about, some ground rules. One, the plant's going to remain completely in its existing public ownership. Two, they would only receive and treat wastewater generated from the existing network of communities who are contributing flows to it now. Period. That's it. There's going to be no private activity there allowed, and here's a key reason why. It's been a real pleasure to work with the Bar Council for the two communities, who each had the same. They've got good expertise in this field too. Because you've got so much money from EFC, through the state, through the state revolving loan fund, you're subject to internal revenue, and it's tax exempt, your use of the assets that's developed is subject to internal revenue provisions. If this thing starts doing private work, having been built with public money, the tax rate goes away, and there's going to be financial chaos that would have to be engaged. So that's just a rock-solid wall around this transaction. And then third, the work of a chosen contractor is going to be subject to strict oversight by an owner, who is going to be basically empowered with a contract that when the day is done, it's an owner's manual. And then we know questions as to who's supposed to be doing what, and what the consequences are if they aren't done. I want to give you three key examples of public interest as well, that the mayor's really insisted get special attention. One of them so special, I can honestly say I've done a CNN anywhere else. And that's the first one, staffing. Staffing. Not only did the RFP provide prospective proposals with the current CSEA lobbying agreement, that's normal course of business. The RFP contains very explicit language describing one of the key factors, and how a selection would be made. That being, quote, "Provide a detailed plan on how it will give existing plant employees an opportunity to become a part of its workforce." And it didn't start there, because we designate, after having met the week before the RFP went out with, business agent for the CSEA local, and a delegation of folk from the workforce. That's who the prospective proposers were going to have as a point of contact. Now, CSEA has chosen, I don't challenge, the illogical right, having made this choice, that they are not going to engage with the individual potential proposers. And what we were told in writing was that it would be a conversation they would have when a selected proposal emerged for the mix. They've got to see at the table the fact, they have been empowered, and I've never seen this in a lot of years, of dealing with contract operations, procurement and contracts. And frankly, there's something you've got to remember, it's a reality of the marketplace. With Clean Water Act was passed in 1972, all of a sudden there was this explosion, because there could be all these jobs available, running sewer treatment plants. A lot of folks got trained, and unfortunately, it piqued it on, because everyone wants to do internet stuff, I guess, and that kind of engineering. And the result is, there's a real absence of skilled talent in this field. The workforce at that plant, because of the skill and the reputation they've developed dealing with, we all have times. And I'm saying, I think for the second time tonight, I'm going to be a valued part of this transaction, I'm very confident, with all of the potential proposals. Second, cost, I've talked to you about the cost, the fact that the annual cost is to be specified, that there's going to be capital work done beyond maintenance, that's going to be pre-approved by the owner. And of course, the same is true of Max, Ron, lightning strikes, God forbid any of those. Those are two prime examples. You've all, I believe, received the RFP. The bottom line is, what it does is it just lays out the obligations that we are looking to place on the selected entity. Those three loom large in that selection. Five factors of what we're going to score, the staffing, our technical power, qualifications, there'll be a presentation, the cost, forty, twenty, twenty, ten, ten. Has everybody checked, maybe, I think that ends up to a hundred and some, if you didn't, it's because I missed the numbers. And by the way, bear in mind that the RFP specifies that the selection, maybe, will be seven voting members, one of whom will be an appointee representing the City Council, the City Council, and the other of whom will be a voting member representing the voter trustees of the village. The next big date is June 26th. On June 26th, the proposals are due. At 10:30 in the morning, Mike Dervay will then take them to the Board of Contract and Supply meeting that held that day, and he will publicly help them. So folks will know who submitted, and the cost. But then we'll begin the analysis of very complex proposals, review, boiling at a high heat, make sure it's real and holds up, responsiveness to our concerns, as I've elaborated them to you in an overview, an overview way tonight. And then, of course, the interview process. And the interview thing is not about a beauty contest. The interview thing is you will bring the people who are going to be your key players, so that the evaluating team can see them, hear them, figure this out, is this the right team, is the chemistry there, because that matters, like you all know, that matters. If it comes out of the deliberations and scoring projects, process rather, that a selection is made, and all folks in the room agree, that there's good sense of, as you say, that the chosen proposal represents the best approach for the owners and the ratepayers, you've got to keep going back to ratepayers, to conduct the future operation, maintenance, and management of these facilities, negotiation with that selected proposal, which takes as long as it takes, and the deal's going to come to terms with right. Once we feel there is a final contract hammered out through this process, then we'll be coming back to the board, to the chairman of the board. And then I'll just close with this. This has been a very deliberate process, it has allowed time, we've already adjusted time once. One of the things that happened early on after the release of the RFP was, a series of scheduled things had to happen. There was a pretty big process on the 29th, as I said. Where Bevan, on Lake, Craig, and I- Where Bevan, on Lake, Craig, and I, Mike, Chair, Mike Dervay, Chair, met with six potential proposers who came to that meeting. Plant tourism began. It was going to take more time. And I slew Craig, by the way, a good help from the Chair of the Board, and setting this up. Craig was the tour guide, and by all accounts, he used to do a top-shelf job. There were then questions and answers, and requests for proposals. Then, our standard, ah, many requests for proposals of this sort, standard, and it's our obligation, I mean, as far as we all fight, to get that information. That could have been a little better, but we gave, I think, the critical materials that potential bidders were hoping to get, potential proposals, and got that up, so we could stretch this out. And therefore, the point that we want to make in closing is this is a no matter shape or form, that would be a rush to judgment. The process is meant to find answers, they can turn yield a responsible decision. The point is a balance. The important considerations at play here with the operation of this facility soon going to come upon us, especially, last time I'll say it, this presentation, maybe it will come with questions and answers, especially the rate nairs, who are expecting, I believe you can fairly say, that the public norms of this facility are going to protect it and preserve investment in the best way possible. We look forward to sharing information with you as we can, to be as transparent as we can, they know it's going to involve negotiations that could be a complex. Some of the folk who put in proposals might be putting in, trying to show you information and seeing. But we're going to keep you updated as best we can, and at this point, welcome your questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Go up to the floor for questions, Al. Councilman Papstraw.
Thank you. Just thank you. It was a great presentation, a lot of knowledge. One of the, a couple of things that you touched on that I'd like to ask you about. First one was the five-year contract or a ten-year contract with a renewable five or a renewable ten. Is there going to be a cost difference whether you go with a five-year five or a ten-year ten within the, in the cost of the contract?
Experience elsewhere is saying yes, you have your term, we'll come in with a lesser cost. We'll see how it plays out here today.
The other question I have on you, how will the cost be determined before a full operation of the plant? For instance, if they're going to, if they want to bid on the job, but the plant isn't in full operation, how will they be able to reach a price for that?
There are a couple of pieces that are responsive to that council. One is, that's why the requests for information that each potential proposer had the right to make was so important, because those requests were meant to provide data on current scope of operations. On one hand, which is not completely relevant at all to the new school, but it's going to tell you how much water's coming in, the components, constituents, the regulating constituents, the group, let's say, that are involved. So, that data is going to be an important tool that a proposer will be using. And remember, they don't operate the back of these companies, all the business of doing these kinds of assessments. They get skilled professionals who do this. Secondly, there are other elements across, and we pass those pure and simple, two kinds of money: power. As of now, the intention would be that the municipal rate is the best one out there, and that it would be intended that that will be available to an operator. So, the bill would come to Chuck, and Chuck would hand it over to them, and they would pay the bill, and the lockup, and it passes right on through to them. Similarly, the cost of landfilling residuals, where the Groome County landfill is currently in sight, and they would be similarly the beneficiary of that, as well as the payer of the costs. By the way, in the area of shifting risk, what if something happened, and Groome County decided they don't want to dig sewer sludge anymore? Right now, it'd be a whole lot of scrambling going on. Under this scenario, a company that's got options, who's had to deal with this elsewhere, who probably has operations in this state or nearby, is on that to figure this out. And then, there's a third category. So, for example, there are three dozen or so retirees whose health insurance is, is an ongoing cost that will be with the owners. Prospectively, for the employees, that will be a topic for discussion between the employees and the operator and the business processes. So, those are the kinds of things.
In the contract, can, the contract can be, if it's low performance, there'll be clauses where they can actually be terminated by the owners?
Absolutely. Termination for cause is always an option, often with opportunities to cure having to be given. The current draft of the contract, which is the public contract, envisioned one free being, which is to say termination without cause, because there needs to be some certainty of stability in the relationship on all sides of the street. This is partnership, public and private partnership, P3. It's going to have trust, it's going to have a well-defined allegation of risk and responsibility.
Thank you, Al. I'm done.
Councilman Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Toby. Bouncing on the back of one of Councilman Papstraw's questions about, about the timeline, when's the last time that you or your firm recommended a request for proposals on privatization in this manner when a plant was still under construction?
I can think of one, for example, in Portwood Island for one treatment plant. But there was nothing of the circumstances here.
Okay. And piggybacking on that and the study that you did and mentioned in your, in your, in your presentation, what other models for running a plant such as this one did you look at in your study, other than, you know, this contract privatization?
This one was pretty simple because construction was already underway. I did one for Woodstock at Portwood Island, or another drinking plant.
Can you speak up? Sorry.
Sure, sure. I'm reflecting on the past, so I'm getting.
Nostalgic, all right.
Yeah, yeah. So, there were more options to look at. At this point in the life of this project, does it stay publicly operated? Do you bring the contract to run it? Well, really, that was a great point.
So, that, there was no other, there was no other plan that was fleshed out other than this one?
There really wasn't any other option, Jack, out here?
Why not?
Because of the nature of this business.
What does that mean? The, the nature of the sewer plant running business?
Yes, sir.
And there's, is there a copy of the study that you did that we could get? I haven't actually seen a copy.
There was not a written reply. This was oral presentations.
So, there wasn't a study done, or there was a study done?
There was, there was a study.
It was an oral study?
Yeah. There are notes which would be.
Could we see the notes and stuff like that? Or, I mean, I, the, the reason that I'm asking, I'm not trying to be harsh, it's just because this is a, this is a massive decision that, you know, we're making here, and, and your recommendations obviously mean a lot to us. We hired you, but I originally, you know, in the conversation last year, it was a discussion about looking at the different options, and, and you have recommended to us that this is the only option, this is the, this is the option that I'm recommending, and I'm just, you know, I'd like to see the, the documents and details that surround your study that concluded that this was the only.
Let me discuss that with Mr. Frank, to see what we might be able to produce. I mean, for example, I could give you the voluminous binders of material, which you could review and then make your own decisions around, I suppose, the public records.
Well, you're referring to a study, though. What's, what's the study?
Study is a evaluative process, wherein we went in, talked to folks, weighed their opinions, weighed their statements of fact, looked at documentation, did the same kind of analysis, and reached professional conclusions.
But there was no document, document that was like a white paper or any sort of summary of findings that you put together? Nothing like that?
That is correct.
So, I, and, and I think, you know, we'll have to come back to that because there's still questions, but in conversations with, with management and the workers at, at our plant that, that you've lauded yourself, and they're already getting trained, right? We're, we're paying them right now to be trained as a city to run this plant. They seem very confident that through their decades of experience and everything that they've gone through, that, that they can run this efficiently and perfectly, and, and certainly up to the standard that, that we would be demanding, and that you'd be demanding. Why did you conclude from the study that you did that paying a for-profit company would be worth it to the city to manage this plant and its operations and not, you know, entrust the management that we currently have at that plant to do just that? Is there an issue that you identified in your?
I will not, not knock the managers, that's not the point, though. They're, they're good professionals. This is an order of magnitude greater than anything they've seen in this plant's stats coming up phased way over time. And I was anticipating a question on the training matter. Is training, is training, is cross-training to hold the fields of activity that broaden professionals' capacity in this field to provide service, to build a career? That, that community just isn't equipped to do that. And I've been forty years in the field, and it shows me that.
Good. Marty Mini, Justice City. With, with the cost trading, then, would we be looking at a reduction in workforce? Because usually, cross-training leads to that.
No, I think what it's going to, first of all, the facility is, if you will, understaffed right now, and it's not running at the full capacity of all that's going to come online. There'll be needs for more bodies, and it's not going to lie. But for example, and, and Bevan, he can speak to this very vividly, you really don't have to sit and look at the dials all the time, because these things are very heavily installed, run by instrumentation, which means there's the capacity to simultaneously, while remote monitoring is going on, folks who are trained in new maintenance skills are off doing preventive maintenance, otherwise it doesn't get done, are off doing the predictable, and are off servicing warranties. An example, and, and that's career enhancement. Unfortunately, one of the things we learned was, because of, you know, seniority considerations and what have you, what we're told by the now-retired superintendent, of instances where folks were offered positions, which were promotions, didn't want to go with the chips, because there was a rigidity of professional growth that could otherwise be dealt with and help folks do more with that.
Thank you.
Councilman Livingston?
Yeah, I have, I have so many questions, but I, a couple of them, I'm actually interested in learning a bit more about your background. So, how many municipal sewage plant privatization RFPs have you drafted in your career?
I've had a hand in, because these are team efforts, dozens, dozens, and, and in every phase of the operation, which is to say, before the RFP issues, while the RFP is being evaluated, as the selection is made, and then in the implementation and follow-up. So, I've seen them all. The first thing, my, my first job as a journey was as a Commissioner of San Francisco, for four years there, jacking. My first civilian job was as Corporation Counsel for the City of Gloucester, or years later, I don't want to think there. And the first projects I worked on, in a way that speaks to you, you're quite the questioning counselor, the other end of it, the first Con Ops deal I worked on was for the operation maintenance of our first sewer treatment plant in Gloucester, which was brand-new, being constructed as we spoke. And that was 1982, remains privatized all these years later, with renewals, with rebids, my signature on a few of them, multiple master's. I don't know this for a minute.
And what's the biggest facility you've, you've drafted a plan like the one you drafted for us on?
The Nassau Company.
And how many millions of gallons per day was that one?
That's a massive job. I mean, Nassau was the entire Nassau Company sewer system. I'd have to look at a bunch of other names, but it was multiple plants, and, and it well into the nine figures of flow.
And your, your role in, in drafting that was similar to your role in drafting this?
Al has made so many of us work on them, and Al was having a regular listen. You'll have to, I'll take notes on my pad here.
Yeah, yeah. So, in terms of the, there's some unique qualities to our situation here, where our construction is over a year behind schedule, and we have three, three contract firms on site doing construction that are, that also showed up to the pre-bid conference and our prospective bidders. Can you talk to us a little bit about how you anticipated that happening? Because when, when you spoke with us, when I first met you, you said that there were only maybe six firms in the entire country that could operate a facility like this through a, through a privatization thing like this. So, I'm just curious.
I won't correct you, Council, a public and private partnership.
I mean, you can correct me, that's, that's fine, but, I mean, I'm going to call it.
If, if we, if we decided to hire a private company to do management of the sanitation department, everyone and their mother would call it a privatization agreement, so.
Do you pay their own streets?
It, it.
We used to.
No.
It was privatized. To a contractor.
I'm just curious to know how you, in what ways did you anticipate that conflict that would, that arise, that would arise on-site with having prospective bidders who are also still building the plant?
That's why you build a good process. Mike Dervay's been a huge help in this, too, for the point of insulating this process for those kinds of concerns. And bear in mind, these, several of them are big multinational concerns, and what big engineering, what a construction management group is doing over here is of no nevermind to what the contract operations team is doing over here.
What does that mean, no, no nevermind that the, that the one has to do with the other? I mean, it seems like a, a huge advantage that a firm would have being on-site, having knowledge about all of the, the facilities as they're being built. It seems like that information would inevitably make it to the, the other side of the business that's maybe bidding this contract.
We have built a process that will fill that out of a proposition, and this is part of this world of contract operations that is therefore a team of filters.
Can you describe the filters? Explain what that means?
The proposal process, these are going to be matched up one against the other. The technical presentations, the adequacy of them. We are very comfortable that those, for example, comparisons are going to sugar off any of the kinds of concerns, man.
I mean, I doubt that, but I'm, I'm interested to see what that looks like. I mean, I, I just have a couple more questions, and I'll let other folks, I don't want to take up too much time here, but can you, so I'm curious, since there's so few firms out there that, that could potentially bid a contract like this, you must have run into them in the past, you were the firm, or this Bevan Bidet. Have you ever worked for any of these firms? Have you ever been paid by any of these firms to do any sort of work in the past? Okay?
That's what I've been listening to. Got some more questions, but.
You done, Councilman Livingston?
I'll have more, but.
Yeah, go ahead.
I want to give folks some, some space to answer, ask questions.
Councilman Scrutie, you have a question?
Uh, yeah, a few. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Shelby, for coming down tonight. I have a few questions. I'm just going to preface this by saying, if you could please answer these questions specifically within the scope of our unique situation.
I'm sorry, last question.
Specifically as it relates to the scope of our unique situation with this plant.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Number one, as it relates to contract operators and managers, who is monitoring what they do? And what are the costs associated with that?
I can't predict the future yet, but it seems to me that it is vitally important that there is a strongly qualified full-time
Right.
professional contract manager
Right.
reporting to the owners. We've had some conversations. I can't say there are any conclusions. That's not for me to say what they mean.
Sure.
But I think it's a model tested and true.
Right.
And frankly, you're going to pay for a solid professional with the ability to do that with costs.
Right.
Because you'll lose money if you don't.
Sure.
And that's the trade-off you're looking at.
Right.
On the finance. You cannot run a sewer system well by trimming costs around the edges because it would come back. That's why so many plants have problems with maintenance issues, for example.
Got you.
Because they strip and it bites them.
Right.
So, similarly here.
Sure.
My advice would be, this is unlikertuous, so I'm not giving you more free advice tonight. A strong professionally skilled, full-time, empowered professional contract manager. That's the answer to your question.
So, just so logistically, I understand that you have operators, contract operators, that are doing jobs X, Y, and Z. The contract manager is overseeing them or monitoring them and then reporting to us, the city of Binghamton and the village of Johnson City, as the owners of contract operators X, Y, and Z are doing jobs 1, 2, and 3 in these ways? Would that be correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Who reviews the responses to the RFQ to ultimately select a final selection?
Let's see, I want to get this right first. The selection committee shall consist of following seven members. Each of whom will have a vote.
Right.
Each owner's mayor or designate.
Okay, that's two.
A member of the city council.
Three.
A member of the village board.
Four.
A member of the city staff.
Five.
A member of the village's staff.
Six.
And a neutral person selected by the mayor's joint mayor. Seven.
Got you. Thank you.
Other questions?
Speaking with a number of constituents that I represent, my understanding of this public-private partnership is that the ownership schematic does not change in that the two municipalities, at the end of the day, are still the concurrent majority owners. Is that correct?
The ownership arrangement is completely unchanged. It's completely preserved.
Correct. As it relates to changes in rates on an annual basis, is that ultimately, in the end, the decision of the owners? Does that process change as the way, as it is now? So, for example, those are discussions that we have. I'll just speak to the city of Binghamton because I don't want to speak ignorantly with, as it relates to the village. That's a part of our budget discussion when our budget comes up. Will that logistically or schematically change if we were to move in this direction?
I don't know why it would. I can't think of a reason why.
Okay.
And indeed, there are provisions built in. For example, the good thing about this plan, it's properly maintained from day one, is that there's going to be a period of years where you aren't going to have to undertake any consequential upgrades or new capital projects. Projects you have to borrow money to get done.
Right.
But there is a mechanism in the contract, and this is not an unusual mechanism, whereby the contractor will be obligated to present a plan that it feels is appropriate for capital needs over a period of years. And it's expressly intended, stated, that that will correspond to timely consideration by the owners in the later process.
Thank you. As an addendum to that, you had mentioned in your beginning speech, and forgive me, I was trying to take notes as quickly as I possibly could. I'm going to write, I'm going to state what I wrote here. And if I'm incorrect because I was writing too quickly, please forgive me and correct me. You had mentioned something that was either in the RFP or would be proposed in the final contract about some set of monies that would be allocated as some sort of a buffer on future? Did I understand that correctly? I'm entirely...
I need help with that one.
I don't know if I can recall anything like that.
Say it again, too. Were you talking about the retirees?
Maybe, yes.
Well, I talked about the pass-throughs and I talked about retirees.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Could you expand on that a little more?
I don't think so. I think it is what it is. Which is to say,
Right.
there'll be a monthly bill from the power company
Right.
reflecting municipal rates, which will continue with the contractor. It'll come to the city. The city will pass it on to the contractor without marking it up.
Right.
No overhead charge, in other words, 10% annual.
Right.
No add-on.
Sure.
They pay. Second one that falls under that same category is the cost of dumping the residuals
Right.
at the new capital management. So, that was one category, pass-throughs without marking.
Got you.
And then there was the matter of the 30-odd retirees, already retired, already getting health insurance, staying on the systems works as is. What else did I say?
I think that was about it, yeah.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. No.
Counselor Livingston?
So, I'm still a little bit curious to learn more about how our team, when the bids come in, how our team is going to assess the numbers that we're looking at? If we don't have, you know, numbers that are based on, you know, cost of staffing, electricity usage, power, or water usage, natural gas usage, usage of chemicals to operate these systems. If we don't, if we don't know, if we don't have solid numbers for those yet because we haven't, the new plant hasn't come online yet. We haven't calibrated any of the systems. How are we going to be able to assess the numbers that come at us from the different bidders?
How would you budget it otherwise if it stayed municipal?
Say that again?
How would you budget it otherwise yourselves if it stayed municipal or publicly operated?
Budget.
Do you take...
You already have it in your budget. A lot of those things should already be in your budget.
Yeah, but for the, the new plant has got, has different systems than the old plant had.
I think the answer, again, is the companies that do this, plants of this size, technologies like those that we employ here, will have the expertise to make projections that we can then test through review and interview processes.
But they're looking out for their best interest. Our job is to look out for the best interest of our ratepayers. I'm trying to figure out how we do that. If we're locking ourselves into a five-year contract or a 10-year contract, it's different than, you know, drafting next year's budget. You know, where we go one year after another. If we're locking ourselves in for 10 years based on incomplete data sets, where we really don't know what it's going to cost to operate this new facility, how are we protecting ourselves in this process against signing up with somebody who gives, who sells us a bill of goods, who tells us how much it's going to cost to run the facility? And we say, sure, that sounds good. Where's the protection in there for us?
Well, for example, you speak of electricity. That's a pass-through. That's a pass-through. They pay whatever it proves to be because it's a municipal rate. The bill meets up with the city by the utility that provides them up. And I believe that's also true for gas.
It's for everything. Dan, everything that you mentioned right there, whatever the bill is for them, it'd be the same for us. We would be paying the same thing. There's no handed markup on those items that you brought up, whether it's natural gas, whether it's electricity, whether it's...
Chemicals.
It's going to be the same bill. They may be able to get a better price on stuff than we did.
Right, but my point is that we don't know what it costs to operate the new facility.
We don't know now whether you have a third party for us. We're still going to have to budget it and the bill's going to be the same.
Budgets gas every year, yeah.
And the other point I would want to push back a little is they're just in it for themselves.
Say that again?
I believe you said they're just in it for themselves.
Well, they're looking out for their best interests and our jobs as elected officials to look out for the best interest of our ratepayers.
I respect that job a lot. The point would be, for example, there are penalties. There are dollar penalties specified. There are obligations imposed because risk is being shifted onto this entity, this company, to look out for your ratepayers' interests. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And then it's competitive bidding. That's how we try to get the best deal in everything that we do as a medium. Somehow it's competitive bidding.
Other questions?
I have one.
Okay, one. Go ahead, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Toby. You've answered most of the questions that I've had thus far. You did mention about the facility being understaffed currently. Any idea as to how many more people you think are necessary? Or when this, when it's goes online, fully online, how many more will be needed?
Well, by understand, I mean, there's a roster of approved positions. And I want to say about 12, maybe about 10, something along that order. Checks agreeing, yeah. Frankly, no. And there's another reason. One of the things you do when you go out with a request for proposals is you get the benefit of those who propose doing free consulting for you. They're going to educate us with their proposals. And it'll be very interesting to see what they see as the necessary incomes to account for all those added functions that are going to be performed in this plan and how they allocate it. That's where the answer's going to come from.
Sure, thank you.
Question? Other questions? Yes.
Thank you. You mentioned something about the contract operators being able to take in existing plant staff. Would you be able to elaborate on that kind of provision that was in the RFP?
Yes, the precise language. Provide a detailed planner on how the proposed, the proposer will give existing plant employees opportunity to become a part of this work. And it will be up to each employee, collective bargaining unit, on one hand, and each prospective, giveaway CSA, as they're going to see, selected proposer, to figure out how they want to conduct discussions and negotiations. Because that's what you look at, right?
Okay. Another thing you mentioned was the CMMS. Would you be able to go into how that might affect staffing? And you said that it would have one op, an operator?
Oh, no, no. So, boy, Bevan, my engineering associate we had. This is a computer program that is just the complete master of what work needs to be done when the tracking has been done with the required regularity and frequency results of it, requirements to achieve those results. It is the master of it. And it is a powerful, very effective tool, very effective tool. Because there's no getting away from it. You can't hide it.
Could there be potential that the CMMS would result in a need for less staff?
I wouldn't think so, no. Because what it's doing is it's generating a steady stream of work that's got to get done.
It's your maintenance plan.
Right.
It's your maintenance plan. That's, I would be honest with you, day one, that there has to be a maintenance plan of some sort that's going to be followed through your team to afford this plant because that's what's happened over the years. And as he said, it's just, you know, things have been letting over time just because of just the way it is. And no fault of anybody, it's just time is caught up. We need to, and this stuff is still specialized, a lot of it. And as he said, warranties and everything. This has to be a maintenance plan, a specific maintenance, operation maintenance plan in place that can be followed to the letter.
I don't think the trustee disagrees with that.
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm trying to explain that's what it is.
Mr. Toby, why can't our current employees use that same software? If they are, I mean, they're indicating that they already know it. But if they didn't already know it, which it seems like they do, it seems like something they can learn. I mean, why, why can't they just know or learn it?
I'm here to talk about the process and what we're going to be doing. I'm sure that they'll have the opportunity, as this goes forward, as this is selected proposal, to talk about how they can dump the oil, which seems like a...
We already had an answer, right?
Right, but it's a critically important question because again, it goes back to my, the very first question that I asked this evening, which was why did we come to the, or did you come to the conclusion that this RFP and this language and this privatization agreement was the best course of action? In fact, you said the only course of action. So, it just comes back to that question because it's again intertwined with the notion that we have employees, we have management, we have staff that already has this. It just can't be, that can't be the selling point on why this is a good idea because we have folks that can do this already.
And they will hopefully have the opportunity to do so in the environment of a much more intensive, order of magnitude greater wastewater treatment pipe than they ever had before.
I don't know. I mean, for me, hopefully isn't good enough. I think that's part of the problem. It's that the...
All I can do is run through again the points I made.
And I appreciate it.
High-tech, complex facilities in the country. It needs sophisticated CMMS adherence. It needs highly specialized equipment personnel on a SWAT team from all over the country capable to do any, combat any crisis that arrives, managing the variations in flow, dealing with a piecemeal transition. And by the way, getting expanded training and a whole new set of skills, which will add value to the plan as we check the ratepayers.
On that CMMS, is there a cost associated with the program? And if there is, who will bear that cost?
It's built into the proposal at the end of the cost that will be put forward. So, that will be one of the things we weigh.
And is that program available to the, let's say, the owners? If we were to purchase that, is that something that we would have an option to do?
I would assume it's available. The question is, will they have immediate expertise and how long, when you're using the maintenance?
Well, it's, sure, we're going to try to retain the same staff. It seems to be some of the goals, so if somebody, whether it's a management group coming in to train, or if it's the person that's developed this program comes in to train, I would think that would be the same amount of time and the same pressures and the same goals.
But I can't overemphasize the extent to which the needs and the complexity of the operation are going to increase with this new language of, versus what's going on in the future.
Now, just one more quick question. Is there any provision in there with whatever management group comes in? Any of the proposals, if we decide that they're going to restrict, you have to buy parts from this manufacturer, this manufacturer owner? And would that, would that be an exclusion? Not an exclusion, would that be something that that would be in the contract? They would say, yeah, we're going to do this. And this is our proposals that you will buy from company X, any type of part that you need for the plan?
See, it's a hypothetical. One of the reasons we do the draft contract, and this is one of these processes, is to find out where the proposer wants to see variation. this is a norm in these processes, is to find out where the proposer wants to see variations of that language. So, this is to be determined. We just have to see.
There may be some requirements on the new software or the new equipment we have out there, word by the respect, to keep the warranty.
Sure, I, yeah, that I understand. But that would be from the manufacturer of the part, not the management group that may come in.
Most of the parts are already being placed. Nobody should be up and running.
But if they didn't follow what the manufacturer said, there's a problem. They're taking on the risk.
Right.
Go one last question?
One last question. I understand, it's going along. So, at the last work session, our acting plant superintendent and the business manager of the plant came here, and they told us a different story about this plant that we're building, that the processes that are going to be in place are very similar to processes that they have, they have done in the past at, at our, our facility, and that they are trained to do. And that this, this conversation that you're having about how this is such a high-tech facility that we need the, this like crack team of, of operators to come in and, and manage this plant for us, because there's no way that we can do it, it doesn't, it doesn't match up with what we're hearing from our own staff, from our own managers, and I'm, I'm having a hard time reconciling that.
That's what the process is for.
What process?
The whole RFP process, the evaluation process, the negotiation process. We're midway through here, council, right now. Not even, we haven't got the proposals yet. They're ninety years away. This will evolve over time, and we'll find out where it's going as it goes. So, to be comparing now, as you're just trying, I would respectfully contend as premature. Let's see how this plays out.
I mean, we already know how it's going to play out. We haven't seen, we haven't seen a contract yet.
We haven't seen anything yet.
Anything.
There's no one here has made up their mind which way this thing is going.
I mean, we could look at every one of these RFPs and say, we don't like any of them, go our own way. Do what we feel like doing.
I agree.
Correct?
We don't, I haven't, I haven't decided which way this should go, you know, I mean, I don't think we can.
We can't, we can't do anything until it's-
You can't, you can't, you can't-
We could rearrange the whole process and do whatever we want. Get rid of the board and make our, another board do it our way, make a new agreement. However, there's many different ways to go with this. This is just a step in the process to give us some ideas what is possible out there and what we can do.
This is just a request we're asking.
And to take it off the hook a little bit, a lot of this came from the two mayors in going forward with this whole process, and the boards and everybody talking over time, that we need to do something different. We need to look at a possible other ways of doing things. This has been going on for a number of years. I mean, for a lot of years, looking at ways of doing things different at the plant. Finally, we sat down and said, let's do it, okay? We hired Mr. Toby and his group to go forward with the plan, to get an RFP together, put it out there, and see what happens. Shake the tree, basically, all right? That's where we are at this point. Let's see what shakes out of the tree. We move forward from there, okay? And that's the way we look at it. We can't make any decisions tonight. A lot of these questions are good questions, but there's no decisions are being made tonight. No, there's making any accusations on anything. We have to see what comes in from these RFPs before we make any decisions, okay? And that's going to be up to the committee that is in the RFP that will be put together to look at these, and you're going to get the vote on it. Everybody gets the vote on it. There has to be a consensus from both boards before we do anything.
Thank you, Mr. Toby, for coming down, all right? Let's take a two-minute recess here, please.
Thank you, ladies, thank you, sir.
Councilman Livingston?
Present.
Councilman McCross?
Present.
Councilman Taylor?
Present.
Councilman Papstrat should be on his way.
He'll be present.
Councilman Lotso?
Present.
Okay, President Scanlon?
Present.
Six here and Papstrat is on his way.
And one, yeah.
All right, let's start with Park Outdoors. You waited a long time. Before we go on with Park Outdoors, I am going to ask to be recused from both of them, for the Park Outdoor meeting, because I've done work for them in the past, so-
I'll make that motion on Wednesday.
Second. All right, Paul, how are you? Hi, Sammy, how are you?
Hey, I'm great. Nice to see you. Thanks for letting us sit in for the first part.
Sorry to sit through that.
And Sam said to me, I think we'd better be very fast, so, you know, because I'm sure you're working hard. So, the fastest way I can do this is to pass out pictures of a before and after request. I'll hand out these, but I'll ask you not to read them unnecessarily, because I don't want to slow you down. We, we have had a location at 249 Court Street, an existing sign, property which we own. We bought it from the city and put up a board with four signs, and now we are requesting that one side of that be turned from a static, uh, stacking to a digital.
Excuse me, Paul, you said this is a Court Street?
Uh, 249 Court Street. It reads the Brandywine.
Yep, okay.
And just a brief commentary on digital. We didn't, we didn't ask to go digital. It's very expensive. It's coming to us. So, Sam sees RFPs that are started at a national level and driven down advertising agencies, and they're requiring now digital signs that conform to, you know, they interact with other mediums that take advantage of digital technologies, uh, social networking, tweeting, uh, internet, all that sort of thing. So, it's a combined effort, and so we're kind of being forced into it. You can only put these signs in well-trafficked areas. So, Brandywine is going to be a major location. We already own the property. We have existing signs there. We're trying to be sensitive to the city, not wanting a lot more billboards that, you know, so we are taking down two at the location, and then four others at the corner of Susquehanna and the Brandywine that, that there's a big sheet back to back. And we're taking that down.
It's basic.
And as far as the design that you're seeing, you know, beauty's in the eye of the beholder. No printed document will really capture what the actual color of the metal would be. I can't ask Mr. Mayor to do the first step, but we've actually sought advice from planning department in Pacific Tito Martinez, and thus I think we had a casual request to the mayor to, to look at a piece of metal that is the right, it's the right, the right feel. It doesn't reflect light. It won't be distracting in any way. It should be an ideal solution. And the digital sign itself meets all the OT requirements. It's self-dimming, it's self-aware. So, in the daylight, it'd be brighter. At nighttime, it's like a candle in the middle of a field. You don't need a lot of light. It will be less ambient light than the existing two signs. So, in the interest of your time, if you have questions, great. This would be our first digital in the area, and it's very necessary for the businesses, because we're just, you know, really hoping that this meets with your criteria as well. It's our, our existing property and we're paying taxes on it. So, any questions or anything I can help with?
Obviously, this is, I know the area, there's no residents to worry about with the sign anyways, right? So, that's obviously a concern, too.
The way it was vetted, we went to the planning commission, and they voted six one in favor of it. I will acknowledge that Broom County Planning votes against. In my eighteen years in the business, I've never once had Broom County Planning vote for a sign of any kind. So, we're going to ask that-
In me. That's what he meant.
So, we're going to ask that you consider that we do require, the vote would require a majority plus one, a supermajority. So, if there's any question that you're concerned with, if I could answer it now, so I don't-
Councilor, it's great.
Yeah, no, I mean, just as kind of a thorough few, I mean, we've had these discussions preliminarily before. I mean, I was just talking with Councilman Livingston and President Scanlon. I mean, there are no homes or, or, you know, primary residencies within that initial area. And if the ambient light that's coming off it is actually lower than what's currently there now, as well as with Park Outdoors' sensitivity to our passion to decrease the overall number of signs, I, I think it's a good idea.
And just, I, I would just like to say briefly that in my eleven years with Park Outdoor, and I think Jared could attest to this, and Ken could also attest to this, we tried to work with the city. We've taken down quite a few boards in triple cities and in the, in the city of Benhamdale over the years. In reality, we're going to be removing two static faces that are at the present location with the one digital and the four signs on North Shore Drive, which we agreed to take down also. So, we are moving backwards with the number of signs in the city, and this is the innovative way of moving forward with the digital. You're seeing more communities are doing it. Elmira, the city of Elmira has just authorized four digitals in the city itself. So, we are a little behind the eight ball in our area, but, you know, looking to move forward, and once this goes up, maybe the, the general consensus of the community itself will be, that is something that's, and, you know, enticing, and, you know, we're excited about it. It's the, it's the future of the outdoor business. So, you know, we're looking, you know, hopefully we'll have everybody's agreement here. And one of the other things that I would like to mention is that we are going to have, there's going to be eight, ten-second terms. We're going to hold back what we call a half a slot. We're going to use that for community messages, whether it be promote First Friday. It could be anything, you know, field days, it's, you know, MacArthur Park, the Noel Farley, anything like that. We're going to use that slot for that type of activity going forward, so.
Who's going to coordinate that?
We will be coordinating that with the city, and, yeah, because I spoke, you know, the police department has some interest in using it themselves. I'm not real, I'm not a real expert on it yet, because we haven't really had any in my division. But I know on, on the highway in Barton, my counterpart in Elmira used it when the individual was killed on Seventeenth that worked for DOT. We put up a message of condolence to his family and community. We got a lot of positive feedback from that message, things like that, that, you know, we could use to just promote the community itself.
Even things like amber alerts, I would imagine, things like that, yeah.
Amber alert is actually managed by the manufacturers itself to do a global, you know, it's very coordinated on that.
Councilor Papstrat?
Thanks, gentlemen, how are you? So, with these signs, this is like I said, the newest way to go, and so, less is more in this case, because you can have less signs and put more messages in, right? I mean, so at the end of the day, it, it's, it's going to be, it's a financial gain for your own thing, so I would hope so.
Yeah, it brings a, it brings a different element of marketing that we haven't been able to offer to the advertisers in the community, because with a static message, I'll use the example of a McDonald's. They will look at this, use something like this, where they wouldn't use a static location, because they could only promote breakfast in the morning. In Syracuse, we've got a couple of fourteen-by-forty-eight digitals out there. Dunkin' Donuts promotes breakfasts, different concepts. You could change the message, the advertising.
During the course of the day.
Yeah.
Right, right. It gets a little intricate, but there's a trafficking department that we're going to be using in Syracuse. It's going to handle all of our traffic.
So, how many, how many different advertisers can you have in the course of a day?
We could have up to eight.
Up to eight.
Right. There'll be, there'll be eight slots on there. There's going to be eight, ten-second terms. That's what, that's our plan right now, is to move forward with it, so that we could offer the advertiser, if they were to buy a complete slot, they wouldn't be geared, it wouldn't be guaranteed. They would have up to a thousand eighty commercials a day, ten-second commercials. So, that's the way that works, and they'll be in a rotation. There's going to be times that there won't be advertisers up there, so the, if there's only six that are sold for a specific period of time, they will rotate evenly over the eight slots.
Councilman Livingston?
Yeah, thanks. Paul, I, I don't see anything wrong with this, so I'm just curious to know what's, you know, what seems to be the, the problem with the county, and what seems to be the, the concern of that, that one person who voted on the planning commission against it? I'm just interested, you know, how would you characterize the opposition to these signs? In the nicest way possible, of course.
I think this is my question for Jeff.
Okay.
The county's always been against signs.
Right, right. The county-
And some people just don't like signs.
Consequently, the county is really, they've never voted in agreement of any signage in this, not only in Broom County, but other counties. It just seems to be that that's the nature of county planning, the negative on signage.
Okay.
So, that's, that's what we've run into over the past twelve years.
Okay. And what about the person on the plan, the planning commission? I'm just curious to know.
Well, the chairman is a great guy. I, you know, over the years, he kind of whispered in my ear as, as the vote was done. He said, well, you know, you got everybody, but out of principle, I'm just saying no. So, some people just don't like signs.
All right.
And there is, in, in truth, there are certain places where you just don't want a sign, and that's valid. You don't want a residential area that's, you know, so, you know, but we're really truthfully trying to, to be where we're wanted and where the traffic is. And I'm hoping that this offer is a reasonable request.
Thanks.
Other questions?
Can I ask you one quick?
Sure.
Given its location, DOT not involved in this?
Oh, I'm sorry. It is on the slide. DOT does get to vote, but they will not overrule your approve, uh, your negative, but they can overrule your permit. So, this is vetted in every way. I'm pretty fluent with DOT requirements. This meets all of the distance requirements, the brilliant self-dimming shutdown requirements, all of that stuff. And in a former position, I was, we were involved with that PWA. We spent millions of dollars on signs to make sure they're vetted. So, this-
Could I ask you what a sign like this costs?
Oh, sure. It's, it's well over $200,000.
It's a lot of advertising.
Yeah, and we will have, you know, we will have to take down the existing structure, because the digital with the, there's a little extra weight to it, the requirements, the wind loads and everything, so we'll have to put a new structure up there. It's, with digital, I, I personally feel it's the right way to go. It's a great area coming into the city. It'll be enticing coming into the city. I think it'll be a little exciting. You've probably all seen the ones that are in Vestal. You know, we were involved in that initially, but ultimately, we didn't happen to fit into the scheme of things out there. They're, they're nice signs. I, I'm not in total agreement the way they're built so relatively ground, especially on a highway like 434. They should be in the air, because I think they're, if anything, they're more of a deterrent on the ground and more of a distraction. And I've seen it, but that's neither, you know, that's the way that Vestal would forward on it. This concept up is what you'll see through all the other communities in the southern tier, Capital District, P.A., Saginaw.
I need to change my answer. I just realized, approaching $200,000.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Paul. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Martinez, you're next. Tell us about RL 19-113, please.
Uh, so, the planning commission only advises city council on billboards. They don't have the authority to approve or deny, so that requires legislation after this. It's the same billboard that was just presented. Planning commission recommended approval. Broom County, of course, recommended denial. So, you would need a supermajority to approve this.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Martinez?
Thank you.
Councilman Livingston?
I just have, I have one quick question, because we had, you know, I, it seemed like we wanted to have Tito come down and talk about the, or to give us an update on the, what is it? The zoning overhaul last week, and you were at the planning commission meeting, I assume. I was just wondering-
So, that's not on the agenda, so let's move forward.
It's not on the agenda, okay.
Sure. Thank you. Any questions for Tito regarding RL 19-113?
Thanks, Tito.
No, it's all right. It's been a long meeting, I understand. I mean, it would be good to get him back at some point, too.
Megan, we're ready for you. RL 19-114, please, Murray Street.
Okay. Two more side lots, 199 Murray Street, 25 Lydia Street. They're in the first ward this time. The applicant, Ms. Cantella, owns three parcels right in the middle of both of these lots. They were each letted properties that were demolished, and she, her offer of purchase was for 501 for both.
Okay. Great work with the side lot program, Megan.
Yeah.
Any questions for Megan?
I spoke with Laura. She's really excited, so thank you for all of your work.
It's going to stay green?
Yes, well, it'll stay green.
I like that, so, yeah.
Great. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Free standish. 19-119, please.
Yes. This is, uh, this is entering into an agreement with Barton LeJudas to perform-
to perform pipe and conduit inspections for 45 pipe crossings that go through or under flood levees or walls. That every five years has to be done. So, five years have been up, so it's time to do it again. And that's part one. Part two is the D E C sent us a letter, putting us on notice that they wanted certain maintenance and rerotation work done. So, I haven't received the final scope and feedback for that yet, so what I'd like to do is move ahead with this as part one, to do the inspections. And then we'll do a supplemental agreement for part two when they get the final paperwork.
Okay.
But I don't want to hold this up. I'd also like to have this expedited if I can, so we can get started on those inspections.
Didn't we almost get fined for the last administration not doing this at one time?
2014, we, the city had missed its flood wall conduit inspection deadline, and D E C was coming after us. It was my second week here, 2014.
Yeah, and I think I remember that, boy, they, we had to scramble in a hurry to get this done, to make sure, because they were all over the city doing this.
They missed the deadlines, correct.
Yeah.
Question for Mr. Stadish?
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray, for coming down.
I'm sorry, too, but moving forward, this doesn't have to be.
Ted Frank, you're next.
This is a standard workday. I mean, periodically, the standard workday in the New York State Controller's Office requires all municipalities to report standard workdays for non-unionized employees. So, periodically, about once a year or so, I T and court council get together for every new people are and flood naves as the state has them. And it's at that time.
Questions for Mr. Frank? All right, Ken, thanks. Under RL 19-118, Mr. Shager and Chris Stedish.
Okay, what we're requesting here is to move $995,794,000 out of our general fund fund balance to take care of some needs that we have. The first one is to purchase snow equipment in the amount of $76,004. The actual amount of snow equipment that we're buying is greater than that. It's basically three different trucks, I believe, together with snowplow equipment. And we altogether, I think it cost us about $220,000. We're losing $150,000 that they already have in their capital funds. Two pieces is going to DPW, one piece is going to Parks. So, that is $76,004. Additional street reconstruction, now that we are in the year, and we have a better idea of where we stand and what we can do, we feel we need $400,000 to do some additional street reconstruction. This isn't milling fade, this is going to be roads, curbs, and things of that nature.
It's good for the infrastructure, then?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you have an idea of where that additional work's going to be done, Chuck?
I, I don't have that, just kind of, when we were going down through the list of what we thought we could complete before the end of the year, we looked at our bond, what we get from chip money, and think that we could use the $400,000 to complete some other roads that are out there. I can't tell you, it's for a specific thing.
Do you think we, we could get a copy of that list?
You guys usually send them out?
We have something more finalized, yes.
When do you think that'll be?
Um, well, next month or so, maybe.
Good.
We're asking for $250,000 of, some time ago, and I don't know the exact time, I think it was 2009, 10 frame, timeframe, we built a partial transfer station over at the DPW building. It has never been used. Okay, we have to do some things to it to make it work, and we have D E C coming in. I don't know if they come in yet.
Not yet.
We have to run a camera to make sure where all the waste is going. But it's going to take $250,000 to get that up to an operational standpoint. Right now, we either take the garbage trucks up to the landfill, or we drop them off at Bert Adams, and he charges us more than if what we would pay to drop it off in the landfill. He's transporting it up there. This 250 will allow us to compact, I won't say fully compact, but consolidate the stuff and take a larger truck up to landfill once, take less trips, have more people available to pick up garbage instead of having.
It's less wear and tear on the garbage truck.
Yeah, those roads are pretty rough, huh?
Yeah, they are.
Curtis, how many trailers do we have to hold the garbage to the landfill?
We're looking to have two.
Okay. Thank you.
Are they going to be leased, or?
We have, we have more, if we found next was to buy. We have some of the equipment we just need for making the process.
Okay.
And one of the reasons that this conversation came up is we have a request in here to purchase three garbage trucks for $269,790. We have purchased a product over the years, I think we've purchased 12 total.
Yes.
At one time.
Through this, that was through probably about 10 years or so.
And these garbage trucks, the chassis have not worked up to the expectations. International, right?
Yes, a specific engine type that they made through international. They've had lawsuits over it since from other municipalities, some people that have bought this equipment. We bought probably the most in New York State. So, just having that equipment over time, it's just becoming, we just have issues over and over with it. Repairs are constantly needed, and it's.
Doesn't it take a year to build a garbage truck?
Well, it does take about a year.
Just like a fire truck?
Yes.
Takes just about a year.
But here's what these guys are doing for us. They're selling us three chassis, okay, and it's like $89,000 and change, okay? They're going to take the old trucks, take the bodies off of them, and put it on here without charging us anything. What we're going to do is pay basically the base cost for the chassis. If you think about it, last year, we bought a new garbage truck for $180,000, okay? Each one of these are like $89,000.
And they're going to be snowplow capable, too?
Yes.
By doing that?
We can make them snowplow capable, okay? We did not do it on this one right here, on these three. We may put it in the budget, okay? We wanted, we wanted to get the garbage trucks on order because of the length of time.
Yes. But don't they come from the factory snowplow capable?
Yes, they are snowplow capable, but we have to add that option.
All right, but they will be able to take on the option?
Yes.
Yes, we slipped a budget for the plows in the next year.
Okay, that was my question. Will you be able to accommodate a plow?
Yeah, so, yeah, well, when we get the truck, we would just have to order the whole plow package, the amount we put on the front.
Charles from Bearsberg, why didn't you guys say to begin with that?
Charles from Scranton, you got a question?
I wanted to plow through it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two questions. So, the snow trucks that we're purchasing, those are in addition, correct, to what we got last year?
Yes.
Okay.
And?
I don't think, did we get them in yet?
We have one, and the other two are shorter.
You did communicate to us there was going to be a time differential on that. I was just asking numerically speaking. So, this is adding to our overall.
These are smaller, these aren't the bigger ones.
The big, right. Narrower streets, things like that.
Parks Department use?
Excuse me?
For the Parks Department.
Parks is getting one.
One of those for Parks, two for DPW.
DPW, okay. The second one is, so if, international, if there's a record of these chassis problems, and I know you had mentioned with, they've been sued or something on other municipalities, were these out of warranty?
From what I understand, I don't know all the specifics of it, we missed, there was, we missed a timeframe that we needed to. It was a class action lawsuit, I guess. This is just from what I've been told, and that was a while ago, and I'm not sure what happened, if we weren't in that or anything, but this was, it happened previously.
So, that's a cost that we're going to have to take?
Well, that's why they're giving us this deal about the trucks, $89,000, and they're doing all the work to switch over the bodies onto the new chassis. They're doing that all in no cost to us, this kind of compensation.
Motors are, motors are good, evidently, to do all that. Motors and all that are.
The ones that we're buying are not anywhere near the same problems that the other ones have. I'm speaking from what our mechanics say.
Yeah, I don't know.
Bernie's, our mechanic, can you answer that?
If I'm not mistaken, what it was with international, they had a brake freeze problem. When it got cold out, because I know a few people that had them, the trucks would put snow up underneath them and freeze the brake lines, and they didn't use the brakes. I had a guy stop in my shop one time, and he sat inside my shop with his truck. Until he thawed out, and that was the part, that was one of the big problems with international, when they came out with the body design. And I think that was about the same time he brought those garbage trucks. It was before I was in office, but.
Are these new chassis and the work related to their instant installation warranted? And if so, how long?
There is a warranty on it, I'm not sure.
Okay, but there is a warranty, so, okay.
It's like buying a brand new vehicle, whatever you go with that.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, very much. Lee, you're next.
So, this is kind of our standard procedure for correcting someone's tax rules. There's a clerical error on the part of the, on the part of the county, but the county can't just, you can laterally act to correct someone's taxes, they need city council.
Okay, questions on that? Under the next one, Lee. Free parking.
The next is Rod Sol, who organizes July Fest every year. This is something we do every year for them. We approve free parking downtown for them. I don't believe the kiosks were a part of it last year, so it will just be in the ramps, that's the color of street line.
Questions on that?
Thanks, Lee. Thank you, Lee. Thank you.
Jared, you're next. Sound system.
Yes. Good evening. So, I think on Friday last week, me and Jess did a walkthrough of the city council chambers. A gentleman named Dave Rassard, he's a local sound guy who's done a lot of work for the county forum and arena, from everything in terms of infrastructure for sound equipment to some of the big shows they do. And he spent some time walking through the council chambers to kind of give me a little bit of an idea of what we'd be looking at in terms of upgrades. But just some kind of initial aspects that he reviewed. I asked him when the sound equipment was from, and he said the late 1980s. So, the fact that it's having some issues, that was his estimate. Some of the speakers were wired more like you would do your home theater system, as opposed to like a public address announce system with like the clippings and everything. The cable that, that kind of controls all this, that goes to, from a sound booth in the back to city council, the desks are actually controlled through two panels on the side of the auditorium. If you rip them out, you can see that that's how the cable is actually fed through. So, one of the things we're going to look at is, what is the condition of that cable? If it's in good condition, we don't have to pull any cable, new cable, which saves on the cost. But also, if you're hooking up new audio components to an older cable, five years from now, you may still have that cost. So, his recommendation was that we, we take a look at replacing the entire system. How that would work, a lot of the issues with the sound are either due to faulty end switches or the switches that are in the council sound room. One of the things that we get is that terrible feedback. Well, nowadays, there's an iPad app that can fix that immediately. And the clerk or deputy clerk could control sound from an iPad at their location, record off it remotely, that type of thing. A lot of the fixes for the issues that are going on are just because technology has improved. So, what he's going to be putting together over the next several weeks is essentially a spec sheet of equipment that would need to be purchased, like the forum and the arena. We can likely find that equipment off a state contract and buy it, get it shipped here. And then we have to probably take back to this council, and likely, as part of the budget process, approve him or someone else as a consultant to manage installation. There's some things that likely our maintenance folks can do to save money. There's some things they're not going to be able to do. But we'll at least get from an equipment standpoint, what improvements need to be made in the council chambers that can address the current issues, and also provide a little capacity if there is a community event where there's sound or a presentation. No one would ever want to show a movie in there the way it's currently set up. But get some equipment in there that can handle a little bit larger collective crowd, clear, able to record off it, that type of thing. So, I just wanted to give an update. If anyone has any questions, I can't be the answer to some of the technical details, but he did a pretty thorough walkthrough, and it's 1980s equipment, so.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Let's keep moving.
All right.
All right, on the cybersecurity.
Talking about this one.
And what is the discussion?
It's a discussion?
I can start if I may. Then the news we've had recently from, from Lori, she's been texting everyone about cybersecurity and how important it is.
And fishing, that's all, yeah. Fishing.
And the county recently has had security problems with their employees being hacked, information, and which leads to, you know, things that we, we should, this city council people, we should be well aware of. Also, it came up that two of our colleagues livestreamed the joint sewer system, and without realizing that it was a cybersecurity violation. And it was brought to our attention in New York State. These things are violations. And I just think we all need to be aware of it, and, and work not to do anything without at least checking if there's any gray area of what, what someone wants to do, to make sure that that doesn't happen. I mean, now, everything we hear these days is cyber threats. It's not just internet or hacking information from your computer, but they can hack electric grids, they can hack water departments, sewer departments, where they can actually do a lot of damage to, to a city's infrastructure just by hacking in with computers. And having a clear vision of, you know, when you post something like that, if someone wants to do damage, they can have a pretty clear vision of this. So, that was why I brought it up, and I wanted to see if anybody else had any opinions on it.
I, I, no, I get what you're saying. I mean, there's, there's smart enough people out there, they can hack into your phone, they can hack into this, and anything that's electronic. Even at the Joint Water Treatment Plant, say they wanted to empty something out into our river, flood our river. I don't know if it's possible, but I'm not saying it's not, especially with the new technology we have going on. Who's to say that couldn't, you know? I mean, we just got to, I think we just need to be more aware, and I don't think, nothing was done maliciously or on purpose. I'm not saying it wasn't. But even when they, the news media came down to see the police station, the police took precautions and shut certain things down, and allowed certain areas. It's not that we're trying to hide anything, and I don't believe anybody's trying to hide anything. I really don't. There's just certain areas that I don't believe, certain things should be recorded and seen in other videos. And that's why, you know, even at the police station, they showed you what they did to it. There were certain things that were shut down, and I don't believe there were certain areas that were allowed in either. So, I mean, they should have passed something up there, too, to say, "Please do not record." And they did. So, that's something really that they should think about doing inside that joint water treatment plant, too. There's certain areas, if they don't want to, they should have a sign of some kind stating, "Please do not record," or "Do no recordings on this area."
So. John, let me make a statement on that, okay? One of the things that OSC has requested, okay, and the mayor hasn't brought this down yet, okay, we just learned about it, is... yet, okay, we just learned about it, is to have this board, as well as Johnson City Board, issue a resolution requesting that the sewer board implement something where there's no videos, no cameras on-site at that facility. By just putting that up, OSC doesn't think that has enough real grip, like having a resolution coming from both sets of boards, and the boards, that's what they're recommending.
It makes sense, Chuck, it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. Yeah, how does that work with, with phones? Because all phones are capable of recording, so what do you, what do you have to do? Drop off your phone in a basket before you go in?
Something that we're gonna have to figure out, okay? They wouldn't give me the language, I asked for a language that they want, because it's really up to each administration, what they want, so they feel is appropriate.
Any, any discussion on this?
I, I have a question, because there's, there are pictures that, like, the DEC takes as a matter of course for what they do, and they post them in their reports online, and the city does the same, so it seems like having a blanket policy might not, might not accommodate
I would think those agencies have their own set of guidelines that they should post. I'm sure they're aware of their own guidelines, you know, we can't-
Tom, they're doing, they're not using them for advertising purposes, they're not posting them on websites, okay? They're using it for their own well-being, as well as all the contractors over there have been informed that they can take pictures, okay, they can take videos, but they are not to be posted on the internet, they can use it for their own proof to show that the work was done proper.
Which makes sense, it makes a lot of sense, yeah.
That's the extent of it. My understanding is, one individual did post it, I'm not sure he's employed anymore.
Okay.
Just a, one other thing. When I, when I started in city council, they, they put me through like a, it's like an online training, and there was a cybersecurity part of it, I don't know when-
Yeah, we all-
We all did that? So I didn't know when that got, when that got instituted, and if all of our employees, even ones who were employ, who were employed prior to this video training was put in place, because they talk about things like fishing and everything else in there.
It was the summer of 2018 when all city employees had cybersecurity training.
Real went through that, yeah.
And the state, obviously through the controller's office and Homeland Security, et cetera, you know, take it pretty seriously. So, all of the employees have been training that, and I'm sure the next time the training happens, there'll be additional, more advanced steps. Whereas if it was after county-
Yeah.
That's a real, very, real example of what happens when there's a phishing scheme, so. The other thing, I, I really do, a couple things on this. Councilman Livingston, you made a couple different comments regarding this, which are just not true. One of them, most recently, was regarding the, some video being hid by the mayor in the office of the state comptroller. Did any evidence of that, or anything, contact with OSC, if you want to share with city council? Specifically to the office of the state comptroller?
Yeah, the, I, when I looked at the, when I looked at the report, the audit report from the office of state comptroller, it didn't mention the YouTube video tour that, that the mayor's office had, had said in the press they were aware of prior to the comptroller's audit, so I-
So your logical conclusion was that we hid it from them?
What YouTube video is that?
There's a YouTube video of the water treatment facility tour.
I just want to be clear that if you're saying that we hid it from them, yet that's not what the comptroller's office is saying, and you don't have any evidence of that, is that correct?
I mean, I just, I just explained how I, how I came to that conclusion.
But you made the same assumption about they hid it from the city attorney?
When I spoke with Sharon Sorkin, she-
You asked one person who wasn't aware of it?
When I talked with, when I talked with Sharon, I called her to tell her that a reporter had just called me, asking me questions about that video, and I called her to ask her if the city knew about it, if she, if, if the attorneys at the city knew about it, and she said that she would check, and she called me back maybe 30 or 40 minutes later, and she said nobody in Corporation Council's office knew about the video on YouTube.
So you came back to it was hidden from us? What, what has nothing to do with the other?
Is that what you said, that it was hidden?
Yeah. And you said specifically that the mayor hid it from OSC. Can, can everyone see why that that's an irresponsible comment to make, and one not based in fact? Listen, I understand there was no malicious intent as part of that tour, as I've discussed, the mayor had conducted tours, the water plant invited me in as a member, as a matter of transparency, in the past, and things that OSC would not say are prudent now. I think we all understand that, but to just make something up is ridiculous. I mean, listen, we're all public officials in this room. We can't just make up that the mayor hid something from the comptroller, or hid something from the Corporation Council, and it's not based in fact, can we all understand now that that was completely false, and the danger in doing it?
Was that said to a reporter? I don't remember-
It was made in a public statement, on Facebook.
I didn't, that is, oh, on Facebook.
I think we all have to be careful, the comments we make, because they should be based on fact. I mean, there's, they should all be based on fact, no doubt about it, and it's irresponsible to issue something that's not based on fact. There's no doubt about that.
I hear you.
I said my piece.
Any discussion on cybersecurity?
Motion to adjourn.
Nope, we got it. We got the back page.
Kind of legislation.
Yeah, we gotta go to the next question.
Hold my motion.
It is 8:05, you know, pretty close.
RL 19-107, and then the sewer board 2019 budget to increase appropriations for printing illegals. RL 19-108, and then the sewer board investment policy to allow investment in the New York Class Municipal Cooperation Agreement. RL 19-109, agreement with the New York State DZ for inspection of the water facility project, property. RL 19-110, amendment to 2019 general fund to, uh, general fund budget to adjust various personnel services on. RL 19-111, replace section 124-26 of the code to provide for continued health insurance coverage for eligible retired employees. RL 19-112, fiscal year 45 action, annual action plan for CPG, ESG, and home programs.
Question, discussion?
And then there's just the one piece of expedited legislation?
Yeah.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll do it again?
Yeah, I'll be in a second. Hold on, Chuck.
One quick thing. I just wanted to let you know that I have an individual in my office that was gonna retire in September, okay? Important piece of the puzzle in my office. She's become sick, ill, and she's leaving as of Friday, okay? I'm gonna have to come down here at the next work session after I get some stuff through civil service, get some titles and stuff changed, ask you guys to expedite whatever I think the money's gonna be, it's not gonna be a lot, I don't believe, to make this happen, okay? She's willing to come in and work till the end of the year, part-time, not a whole lot of hours, but some. I just want to make you aware that I will ask you next week to expedite it, you know, because I don't know the money that next week, these new titles are gonna be, and how much your payout's gonna be, I can't do it tonight.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.